Please let me call to order the Bristol, Tennessee City Council meeting of January 10, 2023. First item on tonight's agenda is administering of the oath of office. Ms. Williams, would you please administer the oath of office to our newly elected members of the city council?
Okay. I guess that's... One at a time or all through?
One at a time.
Raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Margaret Todd Robin, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and of the state of Tennessee and the charter and ordinances of the city of Bristol and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you. You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Lee Powers, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the state of Tennessee and the charter and ordinances of the city of Bristol and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations. Raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Mark Hutton, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and of the state of Tennessee and the charter and ordinances of the city of Bristol and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations.
Mary Lee, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Here.
Hutton?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Here. I would like to welcome everyone and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Your interest in city government is very much appreciated. There are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. A sheet explained those opportunities has been made available to you when entering the meeting room. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I will note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign up sheet has been provided as you enter city council chambers for those individuals desiring to address city council during the appearance of citizens section of our agenda. At this time, I would like to ask Chief Mike Carrier to lead us in our invocation. Following our invocation, I will lead us into the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations to our council people, but let's pray. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, as we come before you tonight, we thank you, Lord, for your mercy, we thank you, Lord, for your grace, and we thank you, Lord, for all the blessings you've poured out upon us. Lord, we thank you for salvation, we thank you for Jesus Christ. As we come before you tonight, Lord, we thank you for these people who have accepted the responsibility and of being council people and mayor to run this city. I pray, dear God, your blessings upon them, and I pray, Lord, that you would just give them your wisdom as they lead Bristol in the direction that you would have it to go. And I thank you, Lord, for the fact that we do live in Bristol with the freedoms we have, and we live in such a great place, and it truly is a great place to live and a great place to work. Tonight, Lord, as they go through the agenda, Lord, lead them as they select their mayor and they select the vice mayor, and then with each item that they have on the agenda, give them your wisdom as they make those decisions. And I thank you, Lord, for everyone that's come out tonight to participate in this meeting, and I pray all this in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city charter requires the city council to select one of its members to serve as mayor and vice mayor each year at the first meeting in January. Accordingly, it would be in order for a motion to be made to choose a member to serve as mayor for the upcoming year. Do I have a motion for mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to put Vince Turner's name into nomination for the position of mayor.
Is there... Yeah, are there any additional nominations for mayor?
Before we vote, I would like to say this. Mayor Luttrell has served us very well for two years, and if you've ever sat in the position of mayor, you know that it's a full-time job, and he has served us especially well. And we want to thank you for all that you've done for us, for your leadership, for your involvement throughout the region. Thank you is just inadequate, but we do want to say thank you.
Thank you. I believe you're ready for a vote, Mary Lee. Please call the roll.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Yes. May I now have a motion to select the vice mayor for the coming year?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to put into nomination Dr. Mark Hutton for the office of vice mayor.
I'll second.
Are there any additional nominations for vice mayor? I believe you're ready for a vote. Mary Lee, please call the roll.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Yes. We'll now take a 15-minute recess, and city council invites each of you to join us in the cafeteria for a brief reception honoring the mayor and vice mayor as well as the newly elected members of city council.
Mayor, could I? Before we do this, there's a few things I'd like to say before we... In case there's some people that are not here after we come back from our recess.
Sure.
Take it.
No, I just put a few words down that it truly is an honor and privilege to serve as a member of council and mayor. Malin, you have served with distinction for the past two and a half years, and a level of distinction I will strive to emulate. I'm honored to have the privilege of serving with each of the four other members of council, and I appreciate your support and confidence in me tonight. The challenges of public service are numerous for persons who volunteer to enter this arena. However, those challenges pale in comparison to those borne upon each member of our immediate families as they didn't volunteer to do more than support the person they love. Patty and Lauren, I appreciate your love and supporting me and my desire to serve the city of Bristol, Tennessee. Mom and dad, you've always been there for me. Thank you for the principles and values you even still... Sorry, this is... For all my friends in attendance, thank you. Seeing you here tonight means the world. And thank you for the opportunity to serve the city.
Mr. Shore, is there any additions to the agenda?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
Okay. Next, we have proclamations and recognitions. We have one proclamation and two recognitions on tonight's agenda. The first proclamation is Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Who has that? Do you have that, Margaret? Okay, go ahead.
And is there anyone here to receive it? Is it on there?
Gabby Smith is here.
Yes, please.
Yes, great, thanks. Okay, and just in preparation, there are a lot of intense words for vocabulary here, so hopefully I will pronounce them all correctly, et cetera. So whereas human trafficking occurs when a person is recruited, harbored, obtained, transported, sold, traded, or exploited through force, fraud, or coercion for the purposes of sexual or labor exploitation, involuntary servitude, debt bondage, or slavery, or when any commercial sex act is committed upon a minor. And whereas the malevolent authority of the trafficker facilitates the dehumanization and material commodification of its victims, corrupting the inherent human rights and dignity of each individual, whereas we recognize that human trafficking disproportionately affects those most marginalized in our community and cultural oppression, including racism and ethnic bias, creates additional risk for exploitation and generates unique challenges for prevention and intervention. And whereas no community is impervious to the potential for exploitation of its most vulnerable citizens, it is vitally important that all Bristol residents are equipped to recognize and respond to the abhorrent reality of trafficking by disrupting the veil of secrecy that allows it to thrive for the purpose of restoring hope and healing to those affected, assuring victims that they have the strength of their community to overcome their victimization experience. And whereas to promote awareness through fact-based community education opportunities to unite and equip Bristol to report and respond to this crime, and whereas to foster and celebrate new and existing partnerships through fluid dialogue and candid conversation that pave the way for increased collaborative intervention and more robust legislation to end human trafficking and protect survivors. And whereas to further an inclusive, community-wide response in which everyone has an important part to play and a moral obligation to work together in collaboration toward ending human trafficking and meeting the needs of those affected, and whereas to create space to reflect upon and honor the resilience, courage, and perseverance of human trafficking survivors in our community, now let it be resolved that the Mayor of the City of Bristol, Tennessee does hereby proclaim the month of January 2023 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and January 11th, 2023 as Human Trafficking Awareness Day, aligning with the State of Tennessee and the rest of the nation to remember the victims and survivors of this crime and further our commitment to ending human trafficking in Bristol and communities across the state and nation, signed by Mayor Vince Turner. And...
Wasn't my first proclamation. Good night, guys. My name is Gabby Smith, and I work for the Community Coalition Against Human Trafficking. We are the point of contact for human trafficking survivors in the East Tennessee region, so we service all 33 counties in East Tennessee. I'm lucky enough to be stationed in the Tri-Cities region, so I'm your representative for Bristol. Human trafficking is something that unfortunately happens more than we'd like to think. It's a lot different than what is portrayed in movies and the media. You know, it's happening in homes of families that we would never think twice about. But our agency is here to work together with law enforcement, with, you know, schools, anything from the casino to hotels to real estate agents. We provide training, we equip people to be able to recognize human trafficking as it's happening and know what to do to respond. And we're always expanding our efforts. So if learning about human trafficking is something that you're interested in, you can go to growfreeTN.org, send us an email, or just get in contact with me, I'm always around. And I'd love to talk with you guys about how you can be involved in the fight to end human trafficking, maybe one day put me out of a job. So, thank you guys so much, and congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, next, we'd like to recognize Municipal Judge A.D. Jones for his recent achievement of becoming one of the first 37 municipal judges to have been awarded a Certificate of Judicial Development as a Certified Municipal Judge by the National Judicial College. Judge Jones would be... Judge Jones, would you please approach the podium to offer comments on the significance of this accomplishment?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and members of City Council, and Mr. City Manager and citizens of the City of Bristol. Over the past eight and a half years, it's been my distinct honor and privilege to serve the citizens as their municipal judge. That job is so much more rewarding and so much easier because of the wonderful staff that you have assembled, from City Attorney Danielle Smith, to Assistant City Attorney Carrie Seaton, to a wonderful and outstanding, hard-working court administrator in Kristy Hensley, and a fantastic security officer in Mark Millard, and of course, the fantastic women dedicated servants of the City of Bristol, Bristol, Tennessee Police Department. They just do an outstanding job. Not everybody who leaves my courtroom leaves happy, but it is my goal and my desire that they leave knowing that they've been treated fairly and respectfully. And that's what I will strive to do so long as you permit me to have the honor and privilege of serving this capacity. Over the past five years, I've been working through the Tennessee Municipal Judges Conference to achieve a certification through the National Judicial College as a Certified Municipal Judge. This was a pilot program that was started by the National Judicial College in order to provide additional educational opportunities for municipal judges throughout the country. And Tennessee was chosen as one of the first states in the country to instill this five-year program, and I've been honored to complete that program and have been awarded that certification, and I'm happy to share that with citizens of Bristol, Tennessee. And again, I appreciate the honor and privilege of serving them in this capacity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next, we would like to publicly recognize Ms. Holly Varon and the Finance Department for receiving the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. This is the 19th consecutive year that the City of Bristol, Tennessee has received this prestigious award. Ms. Varon, would you like to offer your comments on the receipt of this award?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council and City Manager, for just recognizing this at this time, and it is a high honor that we're able to achieve. And it's also a huge team effort. Everyone probably in this room has played a part in it in some way, and our related organizations as well. So, and my finance team does a lot of work to get this prepared as well, so I want to thank everyone, and appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, there's a... Mayor, there's a plaque there if you'd like to have your picture, or Council would like to have their picture taken with Holly. And I think there's also maybe a certificate there for Judge Jones. Isn't that, is that correct, Judge? Do you have a... It would be nice to have a picture of Council with Judge Jones also to recognize his accomplishments.
Okay, next presentations. Next on the agenda, Mr. Billy Robinson, Partner, and Mr. David Elkin, Senior Manager with the public accounting firm Brown Edwards, are with us to present the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2022. Gentlemen?
Good evening. Thank you all for the opportunity to present to Council this evening and go over your completion of the June 30th, 2022 financial report. My name is Billy Robinson, and I'm a partner with the firm of Brown Edwards &amp; Company. We spend a lot of time auditing governmental entities, et cetera, and had the opportunity to audit the city many years ago, and so we are grateful for the opportunity again to do that. You have a great city with really good employees. We're going to go through, just kind of hit the highlights. We're here to answer questions for you all. I'm going to turn it over to David and let him kind of go through the specifics with you all, but we're here for you all and any questions you may have, so please feel free to ask us questions as you go through it. So thank you again for the opportunity, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
As Billy said, my name is David Elkins. I'm a Senior Manager out of our Bristol office, and like back when I first started at Brown Edwards, the City of Bristol was actually the very first government audit that I ever worked on, so I'm just very glad that we have the opportunity to work with the city again. I believe Holly has provided you all with a copy of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, so I'm just going to kind of hit, like I said, just some of the very high highlights. I just, I know Holly and her team were just recognized for this, but if you go to page Roman numeral V, that is the last year's Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. We do a lot of governments, and I would say only maybe 10, 15% of them participate in this program, so the fact that the city has gotten this award for 19 consecutive years is a great accomplishment to Holly and her team. This report that is in front of you has been submitted to the GFOA, and we would expect that it would receive this award for next year as well. If you go to pages one through four, that is the Independent Auditor's Report. The Auditor's Report looks a little bit different than it has in the past, there's a new format that we were required to use, but we have issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, says that the financial statements were fairly presented in accordance with governmental accounting standards. It goes through some of the auditor's responsibilities and the management responsibilities. There is one paragraph in the report that won't always be there, there's a paragraph related to the change in accounting principle, there was a new standard related to leases that required leases that would be considered operating leases, where you're just paying month-to-month to be recorded out on the financial statements, either as assets or liabilities during the current year. So that's kind of just a new standard this year. But if you go to page 5A through 5Q, that is the Management Discussion Analysis, which Holly has written. I always encourage members to read through the Management Discussion Analysis, because I feel like that gives the best picture. It gives you a lot of comparisons to prior years, and hits a lot of the highlights and whatnot. Pages six through eight are what we call the Government-Wide Financial Statements on a full accrual financial, or full accrual basis. Where boards tend to like to focus is more on the governmental fund stuff, that is on the modified accrual. Those are on pages nine and 10. But we're, I think, one of the things that boards really like to see is the budget-to-actual statements. For the general fund, the budget-to-actual statements begin on page 14. And if you kind of look through the budget-to-actual, you will see that the revenues... And if you kind of look through the budget-to-actual, you will see that the revenues came in over about $3.5 million over budget from what you all had budgeted. The bulk of that is attributable to an increase in the sales tax that, both local and state sales tax that came in. So, it's always good, especially coming out of a pandemic, to see the sales tax revenues, you know, coming in over budget and whatnot. Hopefully, that will be a trend that will continue. Then, the expenses actually came in a little bit over budget, but that is mainly due to the accounting treatment of that lease standard that I had. If you discount the fact that there was no budget related to accounting for that standard, then everything came in pretty much right on budget for the expenses. But your total fund balance for the general fund was just a little over... $21.2 million. Of that, 18, little over 18.7 million was unassigned, and that represents about seven and a half months' worth of operating expenditures based on how much that you expend throughout the month. So, I think that's a pretty healthy fund balance, and obviously you'll have, you know, additional revenue coming in, but to have that much in, you know, unassigned fund balance where you can operate as needed shows that, I think, definitely the city is in a very healthy place. But as you continue to flip through the financials, the bulk of the financials are the notes to the financial statements. They're probably, there are about 160 pages' worth of it. The other part that we contribute to this begins on page 233. That is the Independent Auditor's Report on Internal Control. As far as financial reporting, we did not report any findings. There were no material adjustments made as a result of audit procedures related to that. The other report that we have is the Independent Auditor's Report on Compliance. These, what we call this, the Single Audit Report, related to the federal grants that were received. There was one finding that was reported related to the federal grant process, and it related to each year the city is required to file a data collection form with the federal government. And it was filed last year, but the guidance says that it has to be filed within 30 days of the issuance of the audit report, and it was just a couple of days late. I think there was just some miscommunication with the predecessor auditor. But, like I said, it was filed. There was no issues with filing. It was just a... The federal government has really cracked down on the timing of those reports being filed, so we had to report that as a finding. The city during the year ended June 30th, 2022, had total federal expenditures of just shy of $16.7 million, which is a much larger number than you would normally have. But a lot of that is attributed to a lot of the funds flowing through the schools with the Esser funding. And there was also $300,000 expended of the American Rescue Plan Act, which you all still have a considerable amount as of June 30th that was unspent, that we would expect to see spent going forward. But like I said, the one finding was the only finding that we reported, and then at the end of it, it does have Management's Corrective Action Plan, which basically says that, you know, we intend to file this on time. We've got that process started on our end, and we will notify Holly and her team. But I definitely, I just wanted to extend a thank you to Holly and her team at the city as well as Tara Music and her team over at the school board. This is, you know, it's about a 300-page report altogether when you put all these together. So, it's a massive report with a large amount of information, and we asked a whole lot of questions. So, there's a lot of work goes into it from the staff, and they were very accommodating to getting us what we needed, and so we definitely appreciate working with the city again. There are two other documents that I believe are provided to you. One is the Required Communication with Those Charged with Governance. That is just required by the auditing standards. It says that we did not have any difficulties that we encountered during the audit, and it points you to some of the sensitive areas that were there, estimates involved in the financials, such as your allowance for doubtful accounts. One big estimate relates to the pension and OPEB things. If you were to look at the thing, there is a very large pension asset right now that is calculated by the State of Tennessee and provided. I wouldn't be surprised if that number turns into a liability next year because the pension numbers are all a year behind. That's actually as of June 30th, 2021. So, it factors in the investments that are, that the state has invested in the pension fund, and with the change in the markets from 2021 to 22, that very well could change to liability. It might not, but like I said, that information all comes from the state. And then the other document is what we just called the Comments on Internal Control and Other Suggestions. These are things that we just like to point out, that they're not wrong, bad things. They're just the areas for what we see as improvement. A good portion of it relates to IT, which our firm really tries to stress IT. You do have a smaller IT department, but that's to be expected. Nobody can ever have as many people as you would like to have. But there were some things related to the servers that the city is using that I think are in process of being upgraded. And then we also just list all the upcoming pronouncements that Holly is probably more looking at than you all are, but there's always an ever-changing environment in governmental accounting. They never leave the standards as they are. There's always something they want to change. But if there's anything you all would have any questions related to the report, I'd be happy to try to answer that. But like I said, just wanted to thank you all once again for the opportunity to work with the city again.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job, Holly. Okay, next, we have the Board of Education Report. Dr. Tudor, would you want to brief us on what you have going on at the school system?
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, Mayor Turner, Vice Mayor Hutton, and to the rest of you for your reelections. And Councilwoman Luttrell, I'd just like to say thank you for your leadership in the City of Bristol for the past couple of years, and certainly your collaboration with the school district. I appreciate all that you've done, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
We have, we've had quite a few things going on. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for your consideration later in the agenda to amend your city budget and provide a grant back to the school district for the $100,000. Thank you for considering that. I hope that that passes this evening, but I wanted to extend my gratitude for your even considering that. Hope you all had a wonderful Christmas and New Years. We had a lot of things happening over the break. We just started second semester last week, but prior to that, we had the Doc Maples Holiday Hoops three-day girls' basketball tournament. We had the Arby's Classic five-day basketball tournament. This past weekend, we had Brawl in the Hall, so we've had lots of opportunities for travelers to come to Bristol, and we've heard wonderful things from them in terms of our city and the accommodations. So, lots of, lots of great visitors to our community, and hopefully we'll be able to continue that. We were the victims of the cold weather. I'm sure you all may have heard that. Tennessee High School in particular suffered some pretty significant water damage and some electrical issues in multiple areas. Our CTE building, actually, that we've talked to you about, was hardest hit. Both floors flooded completely. So, we're in the process, we were able, thank goodness, that happened at a time we were not in school. We also had some trouble at our maintenance building, and Haynesfield Elementary and Tennessee Middle School had a little glitch as well, so widespread, but thankfully, we didn't have students in school, and we, our maintenance crew and cleaning crew have been amazing in terms of cleaning all that up. I'd like to shout out, we had 11 students from Tennessee High School who earned honors. They qualified for the Tennessee Music Association All-State Honor Choir. We were the only state in Tennessee had, who had that large of a number of students who qualified for that, so that's quite an honor considering the talent across the state of Tennessee. So, that's quite an honor, and kudos to our choir program for that. School Board Appreciation Week is January 22nd through the 28th. That's coming up, and I just wanted to let you all know and remind the community that we have two new school board members coming on board with us on Monday. Will be sworn in Debbie Darnell and Jennifer Henson, so we were excited about doing the same thing you all did this evening, reorganizing and welcoming our new school board members. As you all are well aware, they serve our community and our school district well for no compensation, and they give of themselves and their time, so we appreciate them, just like we appreciate you all. And then finally, just to remind everyone, we do not have school on Monday. We do have 12-month staff will be working, but we're observing Martin Luther King holidays, so no students and teachers will be present. So, do you all have any questions for me?
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Just a quick question. So, there's this...
It's not going to be quick, I know what you're going to ask.
Sorry.
It's not going to be quick.
Maybe not. So, there's the legislation that's being discussed now about the third-grade reading retention and the issues around that, and I'm just curious as to what you guys are thinking about. I mean, it's the law, so you have to enforce it, and I know you have a work session on Thursday, but what would that mean for if we have to retain a lot of third graders? What does that mean facility-wise across the system? You have fewer fourth graders, but more third graders, and how does that... What do you see there? Is that... What do you guess? That's fun times.
It is fun times. It is detrimental. It's most detrimental to our students. That is, first of all, third grade or fourth grade. It's also in the law that we need to retain in fourth grade if they don't make adequate progress from their third to fourth grade year. Those are terrible times to retain students. If we're going to retain, the best time to retain is when they're kindergarten or first graders. Research shows that anything really beyond that is not effective, and in general, retention is not very effective. The intent of that law, in my opinion, I think, is good. We want all of our students to be reading on grade level by third grade. Research shows that students who are reading on grade level by third grade are going to be, have, more likely will graduate from high school and be productive citizens. That certainly is our goal. It's been a part of our strategic plan for many, many years. I do not agree with the requirements in the law, or the requirement in the law, that retention in third grade is based off of the result of a single assessment. I think that is a flaw. So, for example, our current fourth graders, last year's third graders, had this law been in place, we had probably 40-some percent of our students who passed that test, which means upwards of 50% of our students without appropriate interventions would have been retained. So, the interventions are key to that. Summer school is vital, but there's no longer summer school funding from the state for K-2. There is for 4th through 8th grade, so K-3, no funding, which is really where we need it. We need students to be in summer school and get additional reading instruction in those early grades so that we're preventing the problem rather than reacting to it after it's already happened. So, I think there are lots of things that we can do with that. You're right, it is a law, and so we are dealing with that right now. Actually, we've had multiple conversations. Our families in our school district, if they're parents of third graders, have received two pieces of communication about that already, and in about two weeks, they'll get the third piece of that communication. And this next communication will be, your child is or is not on track to be promoted or retained. And if they are not on track, we have to develop an individual plan with them, which certainly we will do, and we do anyway, and then provide intervention and hope that they pass that test, based on the data that we have now. So, but still, yeah, they may not pass that test, and then they'll have to jump through some more hurdles in order to either be promoted, or we are forced to retain them. It's out of our hands. So, my hope is that this next legislative session will consider that. A couple of things, in my opinion, think need to happen. I think it needs to be based on multiple pieces of data. I think we need to trust our educators and have a collaborative conversation with parents and educators and teachers. The teachers and the parents know those children the best, so they should be well-informed and be able to tell us whether it's appropriate to retain them or not, which is what we've been doing before. So, local control, additional assessments or additional data points, I think, need to be considered in that law. So, I'm hopeful. We've had many conversations with legislators beginning back in October and November as superintendents in our region, so my hope is that they will consider that and take that up as a conversation. I don't think the law's going to go away. I hope that they'll revise it, and there will be different pathways to support our students appropriately.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, next, we have one public hearing on tonight's agenda. The public hearing is hereby open for Ordinance 22-19, Amending the City's Zoning Ordinance as it relates to the definition of transportation terminals and their location as permanent uses in certain commercial and industrial zoning districts. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize the matter for the public?
Yes, Mayor, as Council is aware, this issue came before you on your December 6 meeting on first reading and received approval of City Council, so tonight, we have a public hearing and a second reading scheduled. Also, Council is aware of the past, really over the past year, our Planning Commission has been reviewing uses permitted by ride in our commercial districts or business districts. During their November 21st meeting, they recommended that Council consider removing bus terminals from the commercial districts. They also recommended defining bus terminals, some being local bus terminals, such as our local transit system versus long-distance terminals. So, the proposed amendment that is embedded in Ordinance 22-9 separates those two by definition, and then also prohibits the long-range transportation centers in commercial districts, and limits their ability as a use by ride in an M1 or an industrial district. With that, Sheriff, would you like to detail the issue?
Thank you, Mr. Sora, for that excellent introduction. I'll just add a couple, couple points on it. Good evening, Mayor Turner, City Council members. Congratulations to you both. Just a couple of quick items to point out on this ordinance. The ordinance does amend Chapter 2 and Chapter 4 of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Sora gave an excellent introduction, so I'll just point out the key substantial changes here in the proposed ordinance. In Chapter 2, you have two definitions on the screen here, and these are the definitions that will be added to Chapter 2 to cover the new terms of local transportation terminal and long-distance transportation terminal. Currently, our ordinance references the NEX codes for a bus station or bus terminal, so that will be removed. These two definitions will be added. The difference, both definitions are premises for the loading and unloading of passengers, either public or private providers, but the local transportation terminal is limited to specific destination, specific destinations and connections within the city, while the long-distance transportation terminal is, provides transportation between cities for passenger service. Another definition is the local transportation terminal says that the facility may include things like ticket purchase facilities, where the long-distance terminal has some mandated requirements, where an enclosed space for a waiting area is required in addition to a ticket purchase facility and restrooms. The second slide here shows the business zones and industrial zones. The middle column shows where these bus terminals are currently either allowed or not permitted, and then the final third column shows that in the proposed text amendment for your review and approval this evening, the new local definition will be allowed in the B2 zone, so that's downtown, so the local option will be allowed in the B2 district. And then the long-distance option will be allowed in the M1 or the light industrial zone. So, those are the two allowances within the proposed ordinance. As Mr. Sora stated, the Planning Commission did review this for several meetings, and then at the meeting on November 21st, the Commission voted unanimously to forward a favorable recommendation to City Council for this amendment. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to discuss this? So, you can go to the podium now. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Next, we have the Appearance of Citizens. This section provides an opportunity for the public to address City Council and This section provides an opportunity for the public to address city council on any matter that is not printed on the agenda for formal consideration. Comments are limited to the matters of city business only. A response will not likely be made at this time, since most cases neither council nor the city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. The city manager will look into the matter and report back to the city council as appropriate. Have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual and are not transferable to other individuals. I've been provided a list, and I believe it looks like we only have one. Is George Link? Just state your name and your address. I think you know the drill by now.
I know the drill by now, yeah. George Link, 307 Rattler Street, Bristol, Tennessee, 37620. Just wanted to give you all an update, and the community at large, an update. For those who don't know, about nine months ago, the city council was talking about the possibility of installing a skate park, and little did they know that they just lit a wildfire in town. There's a group of us advocates that are working with the Tony Hawk Foundation. I am proud to announce that yesterday, we filed for the private grant asking for the maximum amount. We should have a determination here in one quarter, one fiscal quarter, of what we will get. That will be channeled, we believe, in Bristol to help support the project overall. But more importantly, outside the skate park, we've landed up creating wonderful connections within our community and even outside of our community. In November, we hosted Jeremy Rogers, who was a pro-rider for girls skateboards and Red Bull skateboarding, and he flew in from Boston to our skate park benefit concert and signed boards for kids, and he absolutely loved Bristol, and then started asking about real estate. So, he's maintained connections with young members of our community, both young adults and kids, encouraging them to keep it up. Jake Wooton, who currently rides for Santa Cruz and Red Bull, will be coming to Bristol in the next couple of months for another benefit that we're doing. He is the new it, the next Tony Hawk. I would encourage city council members, when we have these events, if you want to come and meet the community and meet these people, and, you know, encourage...we try to encourage them to enjoy Bristol while they're here, so. One last update. Since last year, we've given away thirty-seven free helmets to kids, thirteen and under, yeah, thirty-seven and under if you're a skateboarder, you're a kid. Thirteen and under. And then, as of this week, we've given away twenty-seven free skateboards with the help of Mike Vallee from Street Plant. He's also the lead singer for the punk rock band Black Flag. He's following us and very interested in what we're doing. These skateboards are for children from low-income households and single-parent households, so thank you all for your support, and we look forward to working with you all in the future.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to approach council? All right, seeing none. We have four appointments this evening. The first one we have is to the Beer Board, which is an appointment to fulfill an unexpired term of office ending January 31, 2024. The candidate is Michael Schmidt. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate? I can speak. I guess I met Mike right when he first moved to town, and I think Mike will be an asset to the Beer Board. He is actually...he's held a liquor permit on his own in the past of an event facility that he used to have, so I think it would be a great benefit to the Beer Board of having
Fire Robin votes for Michael Schmidt. Turner votes for Michael Schmidt. Hutton votes for Michael Schmidt. Powers votes for Michael Schmidt, and I'm going to bet that Luttrell votes for Michael Schmidt. Luttrell votes for Michael Schmidt. Would you like for me to hang on to the other one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, and congratulations. Next, we have two appointments for the Industrial Development Board. These appointments will fulfill two unexpired terms of office. The candidate receiving the highest number of votes will serve one term ending August 31, 2026. The candidate receiving the next highest number of votes will serve term ending August 31, 2024. The candidates are Lynn Doherty, Wallace Elliott, Carolyn Farrell, Bart McMillan, and Edwin Powers. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidates?
First off, it's...I mean, all of these, it's really nice when we have applicants and when we have more applicants than we have positions. That's also very exciting. And I'll also say it's nice to have diversity of ages. It's nice to have some folks who are new to Bristol, as well as folks who have grown up here and been here. And I could speak for several people, but I'm going to speak for Carolyn Farrell, who has served on numerous different boards and is...works for Robinette Company, comes with a lot of experience with workforce and with industrial development. We know our Industrial Development Board does a whole lot more than manufacturing and industry. I believe the state requires that title of Industrial Development Board, but anyway,
Let me get my bingo card straightened up here. Okay. Fire Robin votes for Carolyn Farrell. Powers votes for Lynn Doherty and Bart McMillan. Hutton votes for Lynn Doherty and Wallace Elliott. Turner votes for Lynn Doherty and Wallace Elliott. And Luttrell votes for Wallace Elliott and Lynn Doherty. So, I think we've got...okay. All right. Lynn Doherty has four affirmative votes, and Wallace Elliott has three affirmative votes. So, Lynn Doherty will receive the August 31...the term that will expire on August 31, 2026, and Wallace Elliott will receive the term ending August 31, 2024.
Thank you, Lynn's in attendance this evening, and thank you for applying and stepping up.
And I agree with Margaret. I think it's important to thank everyone that did apply. There are going to be other opportunities, and we hope that you'll continue to apply.
All right. Next on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance 23...
We have two more appointments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself here.
Yep.
Next, we have an appointment to the Library Board. It'll serve a three-year term ending December 31, 2025. The candidate is Ted Black Jr. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate?
I can. I have spoken with Ted, and new to Bristol and ready to be involved, so it's one of the folks who have come here and embraced our community and ready to serve.
Okay. Hutton votes for Ted Black Jr. Powers votes for Ted Black Jr. Turner votes for Ted Black Jr. Fire Robin votes for Ted Black Jr. And Luttrell votes for Ted Black Jr.
Congratulations. Next, we have one appointment to the Power Board. This appointment will fulfill an unexpired term of office ending June 30, 2025. The candidates are Anna Dow and John Van. Would any like...anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidates?
I'd speak...I'd like to speak on behalf of John Van. I've known John for a long time. He has worked in manufacturing here in Bristol. He was educated at Tennessee High. He's very active in his church life, and I think he would be a great addition with all of his experience to the BTS Board.
I'll ditto that, that I think we're...I feel very fortunate that John applied for this board, and that he comes with some of the business experience and corporation experience, as well as he has served on numerous boards, is active in our community life, and brings that to the BTS Board as well, so.
Okay. Luttrell votes for John Van. Powers votes for John Van. Fire Robin votes for John Van. Turner votes for John Van. And Hutton votes for John Van.
Now, next, we have on our agenda the first reading of ordinance 23-1, amending the appropriation of the funds and budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize ordinance 23-1?
Yes, Mayor, as councilors will recall, at the August 20 call meeting of city council, staff was requested to prepare an amendment to the fiscal 2023 budget that would provide an additional $100,000 of nonrecurring funds to the school system. Funds were to be provided as a one-time contribution and not subject to annual maintenance of effort formula. Ordinance 23-1 amends the fiscal 2023 budget by adding $100,000 to the General Purpose School Fund for nonroutine capital improvements. The budget was originally adopted with an appropriation of $250,000, so the amendment would establish a total fiscal 2023 appropriation of $350,000 for nonroutine capital improvements in the school system. If approved on first reading, then a public hearing and a second reading will be conducted at your February 7 meeting.
Okay. All right. Does any member of council have any questions for staff? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 23-1.
We have a motion and a second. Would any member of council like to discuss this?
Right, anybody public.
Would there...is there anyone in the audience that would like to discuss this? Seeing none, I guess we're ready for a vote.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Next is the second reading of ordinance 22-19, amending the city zoning ordinance as it relates to the definition of transportation terminals and their location as permitted uses in commercial and industrial zoning districts. Staff summarized this issue during the public hearing earlier this evening. Does any member of council have a question for staff? Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve, second. Ordinance 22-19.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I would like to...I would like to say this.
You can go.
Okay. We have...our older son lives in a different city, and when we went to visit, it was so well-maintained and aesthetically, it was beautiful, and I asked him, I said, "How is it that you have...that they have done this?" And he says, "Well, they've done it through their planning and their zoning, and they've worked very tenaciously over a period of years." I would like to say, as we look around Bristol and we see what is going on and what is happening, the quality of how well-maintained our community is...of course, we've always...we've always got buildings and homes that are in need of greater repair, but their owners are the ones responsible for that, as long as they're not in such disrepair that they're a hazard. I think our planning staff, our planning commission, has done an outstanding job for several years, and we may not always come to an agreement on the first reading. Sometimes we'll send things back and invite them to go through it again and to send it back to us, but the way that we will continue to go forward with a community that is aesthetically appealing and its functions are very well-developed is through an outstanding planning commission and outstanding...standing planning staff. And I think as we...as we go around, are there areas for improvement, most certainly, but are we really working hard to be our greatest self? I think absolutely, and I think to Mayor Luttrell and council...well, former Mayor Luttrell and Councilwoman Fire Robin and others that are on the planning commission, I think that...I see several of you here tonight, and we just really appreciate your work in shaping Bristol, Tennessee into the community that it is and that it will continue to become. And I just felt very strongly about that. I think we're on the right track in so many ways.
So, my comment, and I made it at Planning Commission, I think I talked maybe at the last meeting as well, it's my...I support this at this time, but I really believe we need to look at middle zoning, that it's a little odd to only allow your buses to go to manufacturing areas, that perhaps we need something like a B4 that's in between, and that there may be some appropriate areas in our community that...that could work with that. And I'll say, we...this partly...looking at these things has happened because, and some of the changes we've already voted on, because we have all the uses that are listed, and sometimes those uses just don't fit in an area, so we've been trying to go back through and see if there's some uses that need to be changed to a different area, et cetera. And in doing that, it may be that we need to add another zone that's an in-between. So, I'm hoping Planning Commission with planning staff will be looking at perhaps a B4 zone that's more intense business than our B3, and that our bus terminals might be appropriate to be in that area. So, anyway, that's what I'm hopeful that we'll work on resolving things a little bit better than where they are at this point, but I'm voting for this measure.
All right. The public had an opportunity to comment on this issue during the public hearing, so I believe we're ready for a vote. Mary Lee, please call the roll.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So, this brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Sora, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, first, we have the minutes from the December 6, 2022 city council meeting, have the minutes from the December 13, 2022 city council work session, have the minutes from the December 20, 2022 city council call meeting, have resolution 23-1, amending a professional services agreement with Loos Design for conceptual plans for active recreation area, resolution 23-2, awarding a bid for roof replacement for the U.L. Easley City Hall Annex Facility, resolution 23-3, authorizing entry into materials agreement with Ardent Development Group LLC, resolution 23-4, approving the reallocation of Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Funds Round 1 and 3, resolution 22-5...23-5, authorizing the payment of Trautman Pepper Hamilton Sanders LLP for legal fees, resolution 23-6, authorizing the purchase of annual maintenance fee for fire department reporting software, resolution 23-7, authorizing cybersecurity insurance renewal, resolution 23-8, authorizing the purchase of a new pickup truck for Police Department Animal Control Division, and resolution 23-9, authorizing emergency repair of fire department rescue unit Rescue 2.
Okay. Would any member of council like any item to be removed from the consent agenda? Do you have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda as offered.
I'll second.
Okay. A motion and a second. Mary Lee, please call the roll.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton? Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell? Yes.
All right. Next, we have the city manager's report.
Yes, Mayor, I've got a few dates to remind council of for the month of January. On Friday, January 20, at 11:30 a.m., we do have the annual Chamber of Commerce Awards Luncheon. This is at the Delta by Marriott at exit 7. On Monday, January 23, at 9 a.m., in the Annex Conference Room, council will meet with the consultant from SGR to review the responses of the shortlisted candidates for the position of city manager. Tuesday, January 24, at 5 p.m., in the Annex Conference Room, we'll have our monthly work session. And then Friday, January 27, at 8 a.m., at the summit, we'll have our annual legislative breakfast. We'd also like to, on behalf of staff, express our congratulations to Mayor Turner and also Vice Mayor Hutton and their selection... also Vice Mayor Hutton and their selection this evening, and also express our appreciation to Mayor Luttrell. Mayor, Mayor Luttrell served for a two-year term. I don't think, you know, unless you're, you're really close to this, I don't think people realize the amount of time that serving in that role takes, the, the number of boards outside of this organization that the mayor serves on all across northeast Tennessee, and the volume of meetings that that, that that requires during the course, during the course of a single month. In addition, I think just from, on behalf of staff, we'd just like to say thank you very much for your consistent support throughout the last two years. You always were behind us, and we just have a very special thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
All right, next city council comments?
I can, you have to go last, maybe, or one of them, anyway.
Ben's gonna go last.
Say what? Ben's can go last. So just several things thinking about during the meeting and a couple things to point out. One is just listening to our school system, Dr. Tudor, that we need to be advocating with our legislators also, and working in nonprofits and with children, youth and families, knowing also our Department of Children's Services, that they're suffering and with particularly post-COVID. But a lot of it is that funding, we, the, the state needs to step up with funding, and it's rather disturbing to know that the funding's not being provided where it needs to be provided. So we need to be advocates along those lines as well. And let's see. Also, the, I wanted just to announce that Martin Luther King is next Monday. There are several events going on in our community and our region, and y'all can find those on the YWCA website at ywcatnva.org/mlk2023. But one of them I learned about today that's hopefully getting posted that I really like, Rivers Way, that does a whole lot of work in our community and works with our school system, they're going to be holding a walk with some of their, their participants on Monday at Martin Luther King Day from 12 to 1 at Cumberland Park, inviting people to come and walk with them and bring your favorite Martin Luther King quote to share with, with your walking partners. So I think that's pretty, pretty cool. I wanted to share with council, this past month, there was a, and Mayor Luttrell and I attended recognition for Brenda Dunn, who's worked for a library for 50 years, and she has provided, today handed me a thank you note. So if I can read that just for a second to say, Brenda says, "Thank you all for the lovely proclamation for my 50th year anniversary. Seems like yesterday that I started working for the library. I can't imagine being anywhere else. The celebration was awesome, and I appreciated that some of you could be there to help me celebrate. I'm honored and blessed to work for the cities of Bristol, Tennessee, TNVA, and the Bristol Public Library respectfully, Brenda Dunn." So we want to continue to congratulate her, and one of the things they said at the very beginning was, "It is not a retirement party that was held." It was very cute. She is not retiring, she is celebrating. And I just wanted to also add my congratulations to our new folks, and hopefully we'll work, continue to work well as a council and support, support you guys. And for Mayor Luttrell, I can, for the time that it takes, and also I've served as mayor several times, and the time has increased more and more, particularly with regionalism and some of the other things going on, so wanted to really appreciate everything that, the time that it takes. And also, I was mayor when COVID started, and Mayor Luttrell came in after me, and that was very uncertain times. We had no idea where we were going, what was going to happen. It also meant a lot more meetings during the early part of COVID, so just recognizing that. Also, that we're still in, congratulations for our new leadership, Virginia landfill issue and navigating that and trying to support our citizens, et cetera. So appreciate your leadership and appreciate the leadership coming in for, for helping with that. And want to just thank Mayor Luttrell for representing as well and for doing a good job with communicating with us as council, primarily very frequently sending us forwarding emails that of things he participated in to be sure that we were informed. And I can say he did a whole lot better job of that than I ever did, so I wanted to say my appreciation for all that. Thanks.
I'll jump in and be brief. We want to thank Delma for sharing Malin with us all this, these, the past two and a half years, and, and your family, and to Malin to again say thank you, and to Vince and Mark, you know, good luck. We're looking forward to having you in these leadership roles, and we think you'll do a great job, and you've got our full support. Any way that we can possibly help you, we're there.
All right, I'll do it. Wrote down a few notes, you know, during the meeting and earlier today. You know, I believe that service before self is one of the best practices that we all can and should do. It continues to be an honor and privilege serving the citizens of Bristol, Tennessee, and all of its wonderful employees, and I look forward to many more days. We have one of the most important tasks that we as a council have in front of us, and that process is started. This task is hiring the next city manager for Bristol, Tennessee. Mr. Sora has been a rock for our community. His knowledge of local government and all the processes has been extremely important to everyone in Bristol, Tennessee. With that, I want to personally thank you, Mr. Sora, for your service.
Thank you.
We do have a very strong city council that works extremely well together. We're very professional and caring. We do have challenges ahead of us, and we are ready and have been ready to live up to everything that comes our way. Last but not least, I want to thank my wife, sons, and daughter-in-law for the continued support that they give. Without them, without that support, it would be impossible to continue. Thank you.
So I, I just want to, I appreciate the council and your support of me being vice mayor. I appreciate it a great deal, and I look forward to continuing to serve the people of Bristol in that capacity. I, I would be, it's important for you all to know that Vince and I graduated from Tennessee High together, and our mutual friends are still shocked that we're, that we're where we are, and so that's a, that's an important thing, but I look forward to continuing to serve with this council. It's been a real privilege so far, and this is a great group of folks to work with, and I'm thankful, very thankful to do that, and we, you know, we do have a lot of work to do ahead of us. We definitely have work to do in regards to the landfill and replacing bill and the big shoes that that person will be stepping into, the hard work that you've done, and grateful for that, so looking forward to that. I did want to point out that, I think Commissioner Aker for being here and for your work on the county commission, thank you, so, but that's all I have.
No, did, Malin, thank you so much for the two and a half years, and thank the rest of council for your support and confidence and put me in this position, and thank you. And I guess with that, we're adjourned.